They have to report criminal activities or attempts to violation of the law to the lease department within 12 hours of occurrence. They're subject to inspection and examination by the lease and all other city departments. Again, they consent to that right of authority without a search warrant. Consent to seizure, surveillance records, camera recordings, reports, or other materials required in addition to the license in the first place without a search warrant. The next section, the financial statements, this is where, as drafted, this ordinance requires each licensee can transmit to the city financial statements reviewed by a CPA in a manner informed prescribed by the board. The question is whether, you know, again, you had to decide whether that's something you want to do, whether you want to examine their financials up here.
I really don't want to go, I mean, we don't do it for any other business. I personally don't.
Do they have to submit that to the state?
They do, so there's nothing we can do about that.
Right, and I just mean that-
Oh, yeah.
Does that affect our revenue at all, though? That was one of our reasons of doing this, to try to help.
Well, the way that, the way the revenue is going to come to us, it's going to be, I mean, once all these requirements for the, to fund the LARA operation and the veterans, that 10% excise tax, 15% of that will come to local governments that have it. And they really haven't defined how, there could be a number of facilities you have in your cities to determine how much you get. Their financial statements, I don't know how that's going to correlate to that at all. I guess part of my justification is, is we want to, I mean, we're trying to treat them like little normal businesses. I don't ask for your financials as a city, you know, for your businesses. Personally, I have some, you know, I really don't want to be poor in through this, but if that's something we want, we can have.
Will the state do that, then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As long as somebody is doing it, I'm going to think, right.
Then the 10%, once we start to receive it back, it goes to Kent County, then out of Kent County, right?
No, 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 it goes, there's a breakdown. 15% of all, like, I believe 35% to schools, 35% to roads, and then from there, I think it's like, it's like 15% to the counties that, where there's allowed, and then it's, and then from there, it's 15% to the municipalities that allow it. So if you don't, like, if your county doesn't allow it, or if there's, well, if there's no community in your county that has it, that county's not going to get it. It's going to be, it's going to be the communities, counties that have it, to my understanding.
So I make hearing you say that you probably don't want to do a duplicate review of financials at the local level.
I agree with Mike.
It seems like that, good, that's all you're doing, let them spin their wheels.
Also, where do you draw the line? And what's the point of that? Okay, the rest is pretty straightforward. We give your city manager the power and duty and authority to implement this thing in a way that makes sense. But a couple things I do want to highlight, just on the very last page, so, because these questions arise often, there's nothing in the state law, and there's nothing in this local ordinance as drafted, that prevents an employer from having their own policies, right? So an employer, just because you allow it within these businesses in accordance with this ordinance and the zoning ordinance, doesn't mean that you're forcing any employer to allow it. So nothing herein shall prevent any employer from disciplining an employee for a violation of their drug policy, which can prohibit it outright, or for working while under the influence of marijuana. So nothing prevents an employer from developing workplace policies, or from refusing to hire a person because of that person's violation of their individual policy. So again, you're not messing with employers' rights here, just so you know. The other thing is, nothing here or in the state statute prevents a landlord from prohibiting the consumption, cultivation, distribution, processing, anything on that leased property. There's one exception within the state statute that says that a lease agreement may not prohibit a tenant from loically possessing and consuming marijuana by means other than smoking, except for in the MRTMA. So that's a little carve-out, but essentially, a landlord can say, you can't smoke it on this leased property, apparently you can ingest it in other ways, so gummies or edibles, I guess, really, is how they're referred to. Again, just a little tiny carve-out in the law, there's nothing we can do about that. But generally speaking, you're not messing with employers or landlords by allowing this in this business context.
Well, we did that, though. Some feedback from Ken Millen, remember? So that's a good thing, because they weren't worried about it.
Yeah, a lot of employees are asking this question, and I don't blame them, but we're not saying that they can't prevent it. Again, it's a gray, messy area. And your goal here is just to presumably allow it in the most regulated, safe way possible. So that's, I know that was fast, but that's the 30-page ordinance. I'll try to cut it down, based on the feedback that you've given me, and let me know if you have any other concerns or questions. But with that, I think the lease portion is super important, because this is where we get into location, and buffers, and caps, so.
Before you start that, Andy, in our cover letter, did you say that we had a request to shorten, reduce the amount of distance? Can you tell-
Yeah, sure. We have a request from somebody who's probably a potential applicant. They're interested in a property that currently is inside 1,000 feet from Bush now, from Bush Elementary. And it's about, when you go from the edge of the property line to the edge of the property line, which is how we're going to enforce this, it's about 850 feet. So the request is to consider, initially, they thought, they'd made a request of 900, however, they were taking it from the build, from the property line to the building, where the way we, the way we always interpret it, and we do, it's pretty much consistent with other restrictions we have in place, is we go from the property line to the property line. So in this instance, for a lack of a better word, we figured, well, okay, if we, if we, the statute, the statute allows us, right now, the statute says that you have, that the only restriction is 1,000 feet from schools or less, if the municipality chooses to do so. So our thought was, well, you could, you know, if you wanted to restrict it to 800 feet, you could. And then what that would actually do is it would free up a number of properties, probably about four or six properties along Main between Center Street and, I would say, probably where the auto dealership is, Ben Baker. In that area, it would free up some of those properties that currently, right now, would be restricted under the 1,000-foot. But that could also be challenged as well, if you make that provision for those businesses where you're restricting it in other areas as well. So that's, that's what, kind of what the request is. Actually, I, in your packet, there was a map, I had maps done of what it looks like at 1,000 feet, and there was also a map of 800 feet as to how it would be, and it would, you know, and it would be, I mean, it would be a number of properties.
But building to building, it's well with those.
Correct.
Well with those.
But we have always interpreted it as property line.
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I'm just, just for contrast. Because the Bush now, it's a pretty big lot.
Right, and-
And it goes a lot further south than where the school is.
There's pros and cons to it. One is, you know, it's allowing more properties to become eligible, the con is that much closer to a school, and that's the issue that the superintendent obviously has with it.
Yeah, I think Greg Pratt carries a lot of clout with his request to do that. Lowell has been on those schools, and what we have, that was our concern in the beginning, was keeping it away from the schools. And we're going to go to 800, then the next guy at 750 says, what about me?
Right.
I just had a tough time reducing whether we started.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of backing off that 1,000-foot.
And there's plenty of property out of the west side of town.
Because like Greg said, once we start it, where does it end?
Right.
So that's what it is. We had long discussions, planning issues about that, so.
I'd like to address council. I own a business in town, but I'm not a resident. And full disclosure here, I own a property that is in the new zone, and I'm battling my heart and my pocketbook, because I could make a lot of money off this, but I'm not for it.
Can we just get your name and address first?
Michael Hooper, 117 Main Street, Saranac.
Thanks.
I wonder what the benefit is to have these businesses in our town, if it's going to help our community? I wondered what you were thinking the benefit might be. Will it bring in enough money to offset the leasing costs? Because you've got to protect all their legal money. Why no setbacks for churches, parks? We've got a brand-new park over by Walgreens, and you can let them build right there. It's crazy. I don't understand that either. And who's going to make sure they're in compliance? Where are you going to find the manpower? You guys don't have money to fix the roads. Where are you going to buy those people? And will it bring in more businesses or displace current businesses? And that's what's going to do with me, it's going to displace me. I've looked, I cannot find 6,000 square feet in town. I could build, they're going to give me enough money, I could build, but why the heck would I do that? It doesn't make sense. Take the money and run. So if you're just going to displace a bunch of businesses along Main Street, and then you can have patch-ups, and it doesn't give you anything but more expenses, because you're going to police all this. And being a small community, does any of the council members have a stake in any land? And if so, voting on any of these rules is a considered conflict of interest. I just was curious. Thank you.
A whole bunch of questions.
Like, I'm not aware of any council member that has any property in that. Just to clear that up right now.
And there was reason for churches, we talked about that awesome.
Yeah, so, well, we, we're going to do it in a little more detail here in a second. In the ordinance, we've limited to about 10,000 feet of your preschool or childcare center, about 10,000 feet of a public or private K-12 school, and about 500 feet of any property within the C2 district.
If I could just jump in for a minute, so, the statute just addresses schools in terms of, you know, it's like giving you some standing. Certainly, other communities are taking into account setbacks from churches and parks and so forth. Just bear in mind that you have to have a rational reason for doing that, aside from this sort of fear of the unknown. I'm just going to put that out there.
Well, isn't there some kind of, sorry, isn't there some kind of punishment for making it too restrictive? Like, you're allowing it, but then you're putting all these caveats in there. So now you have one building way on the south side of town, can't, you get in trouble for restricting it so that it's completely unattainable?
Well, here, how you get in trouble is if somebody sued you, and essentially said, what is your rationale? What is your rationale? Just keep that in mind, you know? And I don't have an answer to that. Some communities did put setbacks in churches, but what is the thinking, what is the rationale? That you don't want marijuana close to a church? You need to be able to explain that upon saying-
There is an ordinance for parks, though, right? You can't possess or consume-
You can't possess it in a public, yeah.
In a public place, right, currently, right, right. Which reminds me, too, because you have, currently, you prohibit all these, so when, if and when you do allow them, we will amend that to allow them consistently with what we allow, so.
And that was your question, too, on odor. I don't think you can smoke it on your front porch, right? Because you're in public view. So that eliminates all that, too.
Tech one over.
Yeah. Mike, your last question, about why we allow it with the new park behind Walgreens? That's the city limit. That new park is Lowell Township, so they voted "Ape that out." The properties are going to line up somewhere on that, and there's just, there's no way that we're scared of-
Why not just let parks stop and churches, so why, why? What's your rationale? You do it for liquor stores, you don't have to excuse it then?
Again, I guess I would just respond to, liquor is controlled primarily by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, so we just don't have much say in terms of that. And I'm not suggesting that you can't do this, you just have to be able to defend it based on a rational explanation for. We try to articulate why you're keeping it away from churches as opposed to other gathering places.
I think, weren't those laws, as far as how close, I mean, it used to be you couldn't buy anything on Sunday?
That's what I mean, you just have to be able to figure it out.
And even like the church rule, for example, with alcohol, normally what happens, because I have experience with this, if you're within, I think it's like 150 feet of a church, or 1,000 feet, I can't remember the exact number, but the liquor control commission will notify the church, and the church has the option to object the request for the liquor license, which in many aspects, churches will say, we don't want it. And then, the first time that happens, usually the liquor control commission will send a letter to the applicant, saying they're going to just deny it. But normally, what ends up happening in a lot of those instances is, they go back for appeal of that to the liquor control commission. A lot of times, in the second instance, the liquor control commissions, nine times out of 10, is going to grant the license inside the 1,000 feet of a, from a church. Most instances, that's what the track record was, and that was about 10 years ago when that was going on, so I'm sure that hasn't changed much.
One other thing that comes to mind, the first question you asked was, why are we even considering this? And my response would be, because it passed in Lowell 59.3% to 40.7%. So, I mean, people say, oh, they don't, nobody listens to the voters. We listen to the voters. A lot of communities passed with a similar margin, or even larger, and their governing bodies said no, which doesn't make sense to me.
And in regards to revenue, we really don't know. I mean, from what we're seeing, what communities are seeing with the medical end, granted that, I believe that's a 3% excise tax, this is a 10%, they're seeing minimal amounts. Where they're, where a lot of the communities are seeing are actually, for example, Muskegon, perfect example, Muskegon. Muskegon has an area of their city that the land was worth almost nothing. And what they've seen is, ever since they've pretty much determined that this area is going to be where they're going to allow the medical marijuana, they're seeing significant land sales for significantly higher than they've ever seen before. So obviously, when that gets recalculated, that is influenced in property taxes. That could have, that's probably, I tend to think that's probably where we're going to see our increase, where in most instances, it's going to be the DDA, because the DDA captures most of the commercial property in the city to begin with. So you're going to see it in that aspect. In regards to the, what we'll get from the state, from the excise tax, I really don't know, I have no projection. All I know is the more facilities we allow, the more we would receive of that cut. That's all I know.
Brad Klosner, Klosner Farms, and I come from Greenville, but we are looking at property in Lowell to open establishment. Sure must have you known my face by this point. We've been here for the long haul, since December when we passed, and that is primarily why you guys are doing this, is because you've been working on it for a year. So I can definitely echo Dave's statement, saying thank you for moving ahead with this as best you can. I was the one who made the request to lower the distance, because of the property we are looking at in particular is just on that edge. And how I understood the ordinance, as we went through it, you guys, us together in the audience, was that it was property line to the established building. However, I understand these things change, once you get to into these emergency rules, and this is a big animal. However, the property we're looking at is blighted, it is empty, it's been empty for a long time, and we are looking to revitalize the entire property. When we considered this, I mean, we knew it was a tall order to ask you, because you have been all working really hard on this, putting a lot of thought into what to do. And of course, you want to protect the students at these schools, and the children in general. However, I mean, there's such a large buffer distance between where we're trying to set up and where the school is, that it's just, I mean, really, when you look at the line of sight, it's a good spot. And as City Manager Burns indicated, it only opens up a few other properties. We did put together a little map, didn't get an opportunity to put out a bunch of copies, but I checked into how it would affect downtown and the other areas, and as far as I could tell, it changes nothing other than the four to six properties that we're talking about. So, I mean, before you guys just outright ax out the request, I would really appreciate it if you gave it considered, because, I mean, we're not coming at this with a big backing. We don't got backers from Canada, we don't got backers from Colorado, California, Arizona, these kind of places. We're coming at this with all the money we have in our bank account, and begging, borrowing, stealing friends and families in order to get this going. Everything is such a tall order with this, that it's, is just a big animal. But I guess in short, before it's just crossed off as impossible, and like, you consider the implications of it, other than just, we got to stick at 1,000 feet, because under the law, you are, you are completely in your right to lower that distance if you need to, particularly if it doesn't affect much else in the ordinance, it seems like a reasonable request. Like I said, we're local guys, we're, you know, we're local family-funded, and this is going to be going to fund our families. We're respectable, we're good people, and we just, we need a shot. Otherwise, we go to step one. So anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. You guys know me, too. I'm Ryan Klosner, I live in Lowell Township. I'm also part of Klosner Farms, that's my brother. Oh, the 800-foot, or the 800-foot request that we put in for this building would be, I guess, you asked where would it stop? It could stop there. I mean, that's your choice, it could stop at 800 feet, the next person that comes at that 750, you just say no, it stops at 800. Again, it's a blighted piece of property, it's something that I would imagine all of you would be like, wow, and we're actually pleased that this building got undertaken by someone that's kind of cared about it for a long time. I'm glad I'm living in Lowell for the long haul. Excuse my lateness, I was at Alto Elementary, meeting the teachers. I plan on having all three of my children at Lowell, you know, for at least their age, you know, 18. My son's 11 months old now. This building is, like my brother said, it's one of the only shots. I mean, there are a lot of properties over on the west side of town, but not many of them are for sale. Not many of them are the proper type of location for any one of these businesses, retail, processing, grow. Some of them may be for lease, but leasing options, I mean, you're talking about something that's impossible for someone that's using their bank account, using their livelihood to gamble on something that isn't necessarily going to make us millionaires. Like my brother said, before he squashed down the idea of the 800-foot rule, or 850, however, wherever you want to stop it at, this gives you an opportunity to, you know, give local people from Lowell an opportunity to open a business that's going to be there for a long time. It's going to be, it's going to be a nice business, it's not going to cause any problems. I mean, 1,000 feet kind of an arbitrary number, if you all think that it's not even a fraction of a mile. It's an odd number. I don't know what the numbers are for liquor stores or bars, but they're sure closer to schools and churches and parks than 1,000 feet. Just really wanted you guys to consider it, this is our opportunity. I'm going to take you for your time, guys. My apologies.
Okay, Cliff, I guess I do have an opinion. The state was pretty smart when it put the 1,000-foot rule in. It's good for sections of the city, being 1,000 feet from the school. If you're going to lower it to 800 feet to have three blighted properties, because that is the number, three blighted properties, because I've been on the phone with these people as well, why not open it up to the C2 district, because you have more blighted properties downtown than you do out in this one block area? There's a whole square mile available for these businesses on the west side of town, from Church Street all the way to Alderman Street. Plenty of property for these people to take advantage of what they want to do with their business. Okay? So if you're going to lower it, blanket it, because you're going to open yourself up to problems.
Wow. You guys, I'll be real quick, all right? Real quick, and I'll be out of here.
We're just going to do, it's just going to be back and forth.
All right, I'll just be real quick, I just want to go over a few points that you talked about in your planning for your issues, and you did a really wonderful job putting this all together, because it's confusing, I know it is. The state of Michigan does most of the stuff you were requesting. The background checks are phenomenal, to get a license to show up at your office with it for your food. Backgrounds, history, criminal, everything, unbelievable. You can't get by them. The seed to sale, that covers a lot of the security issues, because the state of Michigan actually puts cameras right on the cash registers and employees. I can tell you through the banking industry, which I'm in, who purchased the marijuana, at what time, all by their driver's license, and what comes off of the camera. And through the seed to sale tracking, it's unbelievable, otherwise, banking systems wouldn't be allowed to put the money in the Federal Reserve if there wasn't seed to sale tracking, because we wouldn't be able to tell you where that marijuana came from. It's very crucial that seed to sales watch. People that have histories, that have histories of marijuana in the past, are allowed now to own up to 9% of a dispensary without disclosure. Anything over 9%, you have to disclose, which makes you ineligible for your application, with the state of Michigan. So that'll cover you a little bit there. The $5,000 fee is non-refundable, so if anybody comes in and says, here's my $5,000, and we find out that your application is bogus, or you lied, we keep your money, or you keep the money, and they go home. So that's another incentive, so to be on square. As far as the smell goes, under recreational, you're not going to allow 500, 1,000, 1,500, or stack those licenses, that's under the medical side of the law. That's where the smell issue really becomes a nuisance, 4,500 plants or more. But I'm here to tell you that companies that put in five and six million dollar businesses to do this, bring in the scrubbing equipment, similar to what they tried to do here, but they have found a lot better success with scrubbing marijuana than whatever you guys were scrubbing over here in the past. So I can tell you that, that has already been worked out in marijuana, bro. One of the big things about the parks, what is a park? Is a park set up, is a frisbee golf park for children, or is that for adults? Grand Rapids is going through that right now, through their zoning, and they've had some meetings to decide, what is a park? So if you don't want your marijuana establishments close to parks, or established just for children, I understand that. If it's a park that's more adult, recreational, I think there might be some leeway there. Other than that, I think I've covered everything that was a concern here, that I heard through your zoning, I think you guys are on the right track, trying not to make it too complicated. And the state has really watched your back through this application process. They've weeded out the players that don't belong there. And the people that are trying, local, it's very costly, and there are people knocking on the doors from Detroit, Lansing, everywhere in your community, wishing to spend millions of dollars on these properties. Not going to lie, the money will increase dramatically through your tax revenue on your base off your property values. I mean, come on. My farm's worth 700,000, it's worth 3 million if they have to. So who's going to have done it from that $3 million value? The community that's going to get those taxes. So there's going to be a lot of benefits, and you're going to see that happen, it's happened everywhere I've done. All the people I represent are been through the system, through the state, and they're here to stay, not to get in and then find out that they violated a policy. One other thing about law enforcement, generally in the towns that are operating now, they usually set up a law enforcement officer just specifically to do that, to go in and do these routines, so that that guy can understand the principles of what's going on, and he'll start to realize that there's some shady shit going on. Excuse me. Because he's the guy that's there on a regular basis. And generally, there's enough funding coming out of all the other revenues to train and have that officer on that job, doing that. With that being said, thank you very much, I took up too much of your time already.
Sir, what is your name and address for the-
David Overhall, Sidney, Michigan.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, I will get into the zoning side of it, I'll go through the ordinance relatively quickly, I think just now was accurate, there are a few areas that-
All right, so, Mr. Mayor, I will get into the zoning side of it. I'll go through the ordinance relatively quickly. I think Jessica was accurate. There are a few areas that I think require careful consideration. A lot of this ordinance mirrors what's in the licensing ordinance to a large degree, although there are some areas where I think it's important to have a little bit of a policy discussion, talk about the planning commission's recommendation. I think the version of the zoning ordinance that we provided to you, this is what was recommended by the planning commission. And then you'll see areas in here that are either highlighted in red or crossed out and those were changes that we made after the planning commission's recommendation, which came before the emergency rules came out. So, we made a few modest changes to the ordinance after the emergency rules came out and that was reflected in here. Section one and two of zoning ordinance are definitions. I might have to go over those again in case if you gather them by number. Secondly, they are right out of the Act for the NPR main. Sections three through six discuss the zoning districts in which a marijuana establishment would be permitted. And those would include industrial, light industrial, C-three, and industrial zoning districts. It's a fairly big one. Naturally, I think there's a map in your pack and I can bring them up on the screen too. But those are the districts that the planning commission recommended. You don't really expect to see any establishments show up in that riverous and lock edge district. That's all part of the floodway, so it's usually underwater. And honestly, I wasn't in favor of including that in the ordinance in the first place, but many members of the planning commission felt like let's let, you know, somebody else be the agent that's making that limitation in that city. So, that kind of highlights where it goes. So, primarily what that means is that your C-three zoning district is Main Street to the west and your industrial zoning primarily is along Bozer Road where the industrial property is endowed in that area. There's a little bit of industrial zoning sprinkled also throughout the city, which again could be possible locations. So, there's a map including the packet that shows all the potential locations with all of the various offers that Jessica was talking about earlier. Section seven is really the meat of the regulations here. So, what this does, section three is we're simple to the ordinance, simply allow it in those districts and these special land use. So, when somebody applies for a special land use, that's in one of those districts, we would then apply the regulations in section seven of this ordinance to the application and the review process. So, I'm gonna walk through that language here relatively quickly. So, section two, I'm on page four of our amendment here, indicates that a license is also required in addition to a special land use permit issued by the city. And of course, you need a state operating license as well. There is one bit that we added here under subsection two B. What I anticipate happening or certainly possible is that there will be some applicants that'll want to operate multiple establishments within the same building. There's certainly some possibility for like retailing and processing or retailing and, you know, to occur under one roof. Yeah, I believe the Act allows for that and so do the rules as long as they're separated and things like that. So, I can see it being possible that that's something that someone could apply for at multiple establishments on one property. And this language will accommodate that. Section three is the application requirements. So, when, again, somebody comes in to apply for a special land use, procedurally, we're not exactly sure how that's gonna happen. As Jessica mentioned, they'll go to the state, get pre-qualified sort of, then they'll come and apply for the business license. They might also apply for a special land use permit, the exact same kind as they apply for that provisional system. And how you process it from there, we'll have to see sort of internally how that needs to work out. But, you know, we'll need to know what kind of placements they're asking for, if it's a special license, if it's a no license, if it's a retailer, processor, et cetera. On three B, Jessica touched on this already. We're also asking in zoning that somebody who is asking to establish one of these, again, provide, if you don't own the property, provides some sort of acknowledgement that you're allowed to apply for special land use. And honestly, this is something that we do for every kind of special land use permit. We typically don't let someone apply for, you know, special land use permit or site plan on a property they don't own unless they can actually have an option on it or something like that. So, this is consistent with past practice in the city. On the top of page five, under subsection B, we can hear that the provisional license is not required in order to apply for a special land use. However, if that process with the city is not complete yet as the planning commission works through that special land use process, then the condition of special land use approval from the planning commission would be getting the final inspection from the city on the licensing. So, we're making sure that before they receive any kind of building permits or other authorization to work on the site, they have also authorization from the city to report that. So, we're making sure the whole business is compliant with the rules. Every special land use in the city, no matter what it is, requires some kind of a site plan to be turned in. Under item four here on page five, we list out the number of additional site plan requirements. So, again, a map drawn to scale indicating all preschools and kids who all live or private schools within a thousand feet. Information about security, the detailed security plan. We had a little bit of additional information in there in the previous version that the planning commission reviewed. However, after reviewing the emergency rules, they're pretty detailed. We just took that language out and are referring to the emergency rules for the security plan. A landing plan, existing and proposed building elevation materials, description of class to be used and things like that. Again, so we can be sure that the other requirements of the Act are being met. Marijuana, marijuana accessories aren't supposed to be visible from outside the building. So, we'll need to see the application process that they can actually comply with that. Before planning of the establishment, that show those entrances, exits, windows, cameras, alarm inputs, so on and so forth. Restricted public areas. The Act also authorizes going outside. I don't see that happening a lot here, but I'm certainly not an expert in the matter. So, if someone is to go outside, that's permissible as long as they are complying with their rules as far as screening it up and having it be visible from public. Subsection five, this is on page six now. Again, we have some information in there under a security plan. One, two, and three are pretty basic security measures that are in the rule. Then you'll see in subsection A, we're again defer until there's emergency rules, all those security considerations. Separation distances, this is one of the things to talk about. So, initially with the planning commission, when we were looking at this, we were measuring the separation distance from the edge of the property boundary from a school or preschool or something like that. And then as long as the business was outside of that boundary, you could go there. After talking about it with my friend Jessica and doing a little bit more research on that, the Act specifies that we should be measuring from the personal line for the establishment. It doesn't say the personal line for the school, interestingly, but I feel like the school, there's a lot of school facilities that are outside playgrounds, pick up and drop off areas and things like that. So, I think, one, to make measuring everything a heck of a lot simpler in terms of building conditions or, you know, modifying things, moving buildings around, moving facilities around. Property lines, a property line is probably the best and simplest and most logical and most consistent way to deal with this. It would be consistent with the Act. And so, that's what we have proposed here. So, again, a thousand feet from preschool or childcare center, a thousand feet from the public or private kindergarten, preschool, five hundred feet from any property within the C-two central business district. Those are the only buffers or isolation radius, radii that we have to quote. I think it is worth discussing, one, if you want to discuss reducing the isolation radius anymore for schools or any of that. And then, two, if you want to have some sort of isolation radius around how many, how close they can be together. I don't have an opinion whether it would be good or bad to have them all packed in one area, but it is possible that it might be unlikely. Without some kind of isolation radius on the number of facilities, you know, as far as how far apart do you feel when you get your middle block areas and things like that? People could split off properties all of it down Main Street. And if you don't want, you know, ten or twenty of them or something like that, you might want to give some real consideration to some maybe a fairly low lattice number of some isolation radius in between establishments. Obviously, not every property is going to be available for this kind of use. Some sellers aren't going to want to sell if they own property now. But they are gonna take your properties and there are probably enough other owners that have nasty prices and have made the right offer, they might sell to somebody who won't do it. So, it is possible, I don't know, can't say it's likely, but it's possible to have, you know, three or four or five or six who want to add to the other on one side of Main Street or both. And I think that's worth discussing if that's something, you know, if you're comfortable with that idea if not how you want to address it. Do you want me to just keep going and then circle back to these questions at the end? Okay. We did have some standards on orders in subsection C, it starts on about on page six and continues on page seven. So, we have two different things in here. One of them, and these are, this is language that we've seen in a few other places, to talk about how they can do this. So, one talks about an activated air scrubbing and carpet filtration system to neutralize the odors, maintaining working order and order and in use at all times, maintaining negative air pressure inside the building. That's in that, a few places. So, that means when you open the door, the air from the inside flows into the building instead of having the air that's inside the building go outside. That's one. Only also two could go over. And then under subsection four, giving your doors and windows closed, things like that. And then under five, the planning commission asked if we had some language that says, look, if you can accomplish this through some other means, maybe it's a technology that's not available yet, or there's something else here in this ordinance that's not listed as long as someone certifies that this is going to work, the planning commission could consider and approve that if this demonstrated to them, they would be equal to or superior to the options that are in the document. Item D through H here are all pretty straightforward. Properly, lawfully maintained waste and properly disposed of waste. Establishments can be operated out of a residence or any building used wholly or partially for residential purposes. So, that's something that's a little more restrictive than the rules. The administrative rules do appear to allow for like a mixed-use building or something like that to be partially residential and partially, part of it could have a marijuana establishment in it. This language proposed here would not allow that. It'd be almost, that building, as Jessica said, would have to be used strictly for commercial purposes for some kind of marijuana root growth. Item F, where energy uses to heat would exceed a typical residential use. It would be subject to inspection and approval by the fire department. Make sure that all applicable codes are being complied with and that all, you know, pesticides, herbicides, et cetera, are being stored properly and not just being left laying around with children or pets or anything like that to somehow get at it. Don't feel like it's likely that there'd be pets in there, but, you know, we put things like that in there just to make sure that it's clear what we're after. Item G, as Jessica mentioned, cannot be operated from the business. Also, self alcohol, party vehicle, or tobacco products. No drive-through facility would be permitted. Item I must comply with the Act. J, the planning commission may require official landscaping or screening beyond what's required in the zoning ordinance. Right now, zoning ordinance requires certain landscaping. So, if you're on Main Street, you have to have a certain number of trees per your frontage length and things like that. The planning commission can increase that, can make you put in additional fencing or something of that nature, particularly when you might have an establishment adjacent to a residential neighborhood, which is a very real possibility. It's gonna be likely, honestly, because most of your commercial zoning backs up to residential zone properties in a lot of cases. So, when you have an instance like that, this also, the planning commission should require more than what's in your zoning ordinance. It might be like that, like in particular, major homeowners. K through L, again, are all pretty straightforward. Order and license E must maintain clear adequate records, comply with the Act, and comply with all other necessary building, technical, permit, et cetera. The effect of the permit, it's valid for only the location identified on the license. If it's transferred to another location in the city without the application, that's not new. There's no special land use can be picked up and moved to a different location, so that's not treated any way differently. Again, item B, the case that this does not prohibit any kind of prosecution of the government. Compliance with city ordinances, I'm on six C now. The state statutes as a condition of maintenance are discussed in these permits. So, if you fail to satisfy the standards set by the city or by the state, that would also be considered a mileage infringement for special land use. That's an additional layer of enforcement if the city takes that action. Primarily, I think, enforcement of this ordinance that if it needs to happen, it would not come through the zoning for the taste too long. But if somebody leases their operating permit from the city or their license from the state, that would be clearly grounds for the planning commission to start that process to revoke the special land use permit. Of course, there are special land uses. It's hard because there's a public area that's required. Planning commission action has to take place. So, if you're talking about something where something is to be enforced now and not three or six or whatever weeks from now, zoning is not allowed to do that. So, that's why the line of origin, the primary enforcement, I think, is going to rely with either the state or with the city's licensing ordinance. And that's pretty much it. So, under seven violation, that's what we just talked about there. So, if the city finds in here that you're, that they're not complying with their zoning ordinance or with their special land use permit, the city can request that the state hold their state license. And then, under seven, talks about provocation of the special land use permit. Again, that would take a long time to get there. I feel like that would probably be the last step in all of this, but that is a tool available to the city that would, again, further support any necessary action to go with that. So, I guess with that, Mayor Overholme, turn it back over to you. I know, again, a lot of information in a short amount of time. There are a few policy things for you all to discuss and, if there are questions.
Any questions for Ian from the council, which is already edged and everything, all right? For Jessica?
I just have a concern of this first come, first served. I think six months ago, we talked about maybe a couple of licenses of each category. But I think we want high-quality operations here and I don't think first come, first served is gonna get that for us. I realize it complicates the procedure for us, but I think we still want to review candidates and get the best candidates. Just a comment?
You guys, you're talking about the application process then, which is a big one. So, again, I don't know if you looked at some of the criteria that I put in there, but I think they do speak to quality. I don't know what, you know, that's what you're trying to get at, but in terms of financial stability, you know, criminal background check. So, when you say you want the best business candidate, what does that look like to you?